I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Luke, if you'd like to start, please. It's about our heads. Dear heavenly Father God, we've come here today to discuss business, God, and to hear what's going on in the county. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom, your discernment. Lord, we ask for your peace and calmness and discussion. And, Lord, I just ask that you be with the commissioners and speak to them and help them discern what's best for the county. Lord, we just thank you and we pray to you in your son Jesus Christ's name and we pray. Amen.
Minutes. Any questions, corrections, comments?
Move to a booth.
Second.
Concur.
Claims? Any questions?
Move to a booth. Hold a second.
No, concur. Payroll? All got it? Email to you. Any questions on that?
Move to a booth. Hold a second.
Mark? Give you that day on a few of our projects. We talked about the past, uh, continuing, uh, a big culver project, actually, a double barrel culver on 800 East. Has been demoed out, uh, getting ready to put it back together. It's been closed for quite a while, uh, with some, uh, work that Duke had to do before we moved in there. So it's going forward. Uh, we've talked a lot about Bridge 73 on 150th, uh, with some road alignment, the bridge alignment. Those beams are set to be set at the end of this month. So, uh, that's progressing forward. Um, we'll give you an update on our community crossing grant from 2041 dash one. Uh, we've got, uh, three of the four, three of the five projects completed, uh, which is the 200 West project down south. Uh, Millhausen Road from one end to the other is complete and also 480 off of 421. Uh, pavements all done, driveways have all been dressed up, but there will be some shoulder work in the future and all this, uh, stone shoulders. Uh, right now they've moved up north to 800 and 480 or 550 up by Lake Santie, which will be done in two or three days. Uh, so that's going forward very well. Um, another thing we'd like to ask is that we are in the process of going to have to replace a foreman. Uh, we would like to ask Mark if he would be willing to be on a committee for interviewing foremans. Uh, and basically the reason I took Mark is it's basically for down south, the South District. Uh, we'd like to put a committee together, advertise it in-house, see if we've got any interest in-house and go through the interview process. It's sort of like we did in Todd, Todd, bringing people wanting to do that and help, help us and turn eyes on what's going on. Last thing I have for you is, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion. Um, we've got Bridge 131, um, that we've done all our paperwork and our scoring and United was the highest score. We've submitted that NDOT and NDOT said it was okay for us to go ahead and put our contract together. They gave us that numbers last week. Um, we are wanting preapproval to chase you guys down sometime over the next week for signatures, uh, on a contract, which is the same boilerplate that Prue puts out that you signed last, last week on the construction contract, uh, for $480,000, not to exceed, uh, for Bridge 131, and that's preliminary engineering, uh, for a covering project.
Uh, 131's what it's named?
131's one west of Burnham.
Okay.
That's I heard you guess.
Okay.
Uh, one you signed last week was one over by the junior high school and that was for the construction inspection. Uh, but the deadline is they, they need to be submitted by the first of September, so we're sorting crunch time. And I think NDOT's hoping a lot of people will get that contract in on time because they're, they're over budgeted and thinking about people out of the way. It's going to help, help out. So, um, if you guys would so do that, I could chase you down and get signatures and be able to go forward without another meeting.
Okay, motion approved. United Consultants' contract for not to exceed 480,000 on Bridge 131. So, left. Second. I'll concur.
Once I get that in hand, then I'll coordinate with you guys where I can meet up with you and at least get two signatures. I'll try to get all three of them as possible with me there. That's all I've got.
Can't change your mind yet?
I, I don't know. I told Mark I'd like to stick around with that. I want to see basically how everything else works in here.
Talking to do so.
No, I haven't changed my mind yet.
Krista?
Uh, the only thing I have for you is, um, we have an APC meeting tonight at seven o'clock. And there's just two petitions on the agenda, so it should be pretty short.
Can I have a question? The, the property that, I don't know if she's in here, Mrs. Dietrich was here last meeting, asking about, uh, that property he's in on?
Oh, yes.
Uh, do we have any regulations on shooting range?
Yeah, yeah, there's lots of regulations on the shooting range.
Well, the guy next door said he has no qualms with them buying that property, separates our property. But he said he would like for us to look into those, that going on on that property. So.
You can shoot on your own property.
Can you invite people in to shoot? He said there's as many as 10 or 15 at a time.
Yeah, there's fine line there, yes, we can, we can look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Before we resell that, we need to do a little investigating on that. Anything else?
That's it.
Benny?
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, since our last meeting, had 30, excuse me, 39 inspections, 10 new building permits and land reviews, three permit renewals, had two red tags, uh, one on a due base inspection, the wires were connected to the wrong gloves. Owner corrected the violation. Second was on final inspection, owner needed GF fire sap, closing the garage and carbon monoxide detector in ruins of gas fire appliances, uh, either furnace and gas cook stove. I sent letters on complaint to the Burnham residents. Uh, still need to visit their residence on 1050 West, where Sheriff Durant told me of a complaint of vehicles, unlicensed vehicles. Had another complaint about a plumbing issue at one of the schools that I need to investigate. A guy called me this morning, so I'll have to look into that.
State Department Marshals will see if he wants to meet you down there. That's all I have. Anything on that Rodney one, on, uh, what's that road number, Rodney was?
850.
850. Anything out?
I did send a letter. I stopped in there, wrapped my card in the, in the door and, uh, sent him a letter.
Okay. You guys have anything?
No.
Thank you. Mindy?
Yes. All right, the sheep, we have, Dr. Martin got a hold of the state vet. And when the sheep are moved, they need to have, they need to be tagged. And it is for, um, they have to be tagged so that they can be tracked where they all go. And then also there, in there is a list of, uh, like slaughterhouses that I do believe the way it reads, that they don't have to be tagged if they send them there. So, and if you guys made a final decision on what we want to do to dispose of them, first of all, and what are we going to do?
Doug, do you want to address, yeah, any move on that?
Yeah, it's very interesting. Touching around Chief Deputy Prossiter, uh, I was in a grand jury Friday afternoon and there were several motions filed. I haven't even caught you guys up on. There was a motion to stay the disposition of the animals. The animals are not technically in the custody of Decatur County yet, so he's premature taking the action on that. There's been a motion to transcribe the oral probable cause for the taking of a sheep, which is, which is fine. And there's been a motion to compel discovery, which is fine, we can get that to them as well. Uh, Judge Bailey has stepped out of the case, uh, appointed a special judge out of Shelby County who declined. And there's a pending appointment of a new special judge at the hearing at 10:30 tomorrow. So this is very fluid. It'll change by noon, uh, of where we're at. And so I think the plan right now should be for the county to determine, and this may be a council issue. Uh, we may have to come up with some money to pay the triple R rescue for the housing of the sheep, pending a determination by a special judge, what to do with them. So, like I said, it's a very fluid issue and to take the action regarding to this position, making decisions, it's too preliminary, right? He, uh, you know, I can be careful because it's pending litigation. There's two issues. One is he's charged with crime, he's presumed innocent, of course, and that. And then there's the taking of the sheep. And, yeah, Mr. Hamilton had a small claims judgment entered against him in April of '21 for over $7,500 in this. So I can't tell you, I understand why they're doing all this when the likelihood of getting reimbursed to the caretakers, whether it's Decatur County or the triple R, is in question, that they are, they have every right. So I think that's where we're at right now.
Okay. So we don't, oh, sorry. No, go ahead. So I looked at the same motions and I have my own opinion, but I want yours to. Feels like his attorney has a very strange and inaccurate reading of the statute where he can file all the motions he wants. He can have whatever hearings he wants, but the 10 days plus performance bond is a set time, isn't it? Like, that's my reading of the statute. Now, granted, forfeiture and disposition, I think, become separate issues, but that's a known date in my mind that regardless of what he files, come tomorrow, it is or it isn't, and the forfeiture moves forward. Whether or not we should dispose becomes a more of a hot potato. But if that's the way I read it, do you think the same?
I agree with your reading of the statute.
Okay, I just, I read his motion and I thought he was just flat wrong, but I, I mean, not to be blunt, but that, that was my takeaway. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
I, I agree with your reading, uh, you know, Judge is too likely to vote against it.
Sure.
I 100% agree with Judge.
Okay. So we really can't make it, or don't need to make a decision until after tomorrow's hearing?
I think, I think Mindy's right in that if or when the sheep transferred to Decatur County, a quick disposition, I think, is a great idea. Um, but it's very fluid right now.
Okay. And then, just in follow-up, I spoke with the field director, whatever, for State Board of Animal Health on Thursday or Friday late, I think it was Friday. And I just wanted to clarify, an email she had sent to Doug about disposition if it transfers. She just gave us a very generic statement. So I talked through with her what we were proposing and what our hopes were if all this went to plan. And the state backs our plan and our play unequivocally. So they are fine with immediate moving. Um, that's, that really is a covering their own backside type statement to not tell somebody they can do whatever they want to the animals, mainly just, but we are free to move them off the dirt lot. We are free to move them to any vendor that we see fit if and when we become the custodians of the animal. So we have their blessing across the board.
So if they don't go to market according to this, they don't go to market, they have to be tagged. We do have a buyer in, uh, Wakey, depending tomorrow's hearing.
Right, and yes, it would have to be tagged. And I think they would have to, buyers would have to.
Provide the tag.
Follow-up with tagging and permitting is another term that state explicitly uses, was that as well. And I think not much in this world, but I believe those are two separate things that need to be addressed.
We'll deal with that if the time comes. I'm on the same page as you. Any questions?
Nope.
Do you have any pasture? You got any pasture? Sheriff, you're right.
I think there were some questions that were raised by Commissioner Ms. Weller about our commissary. I think these questions have probably been asked over, uh, you know, a period of time. And we had a little bit of email banner back and forth, and I want to apologize to, to Commissioner Ms. Weller because, because of the animal authority concerns, I realize it's difficult for you to get over there and come over to our facility. That's not an easy thing. So, um, this is a great venue to do it out in public, so everybody, a lot of questions can be answered. Um, on the commissary, I think I provided you the statute. I think you're both, you're all familiar with the commissary statute, um, so I probably don't need to go over that. Some of the things that they're used for, um, it's up to you if you want me to make those, anybody can have access to those. Um, but basically the commissary, when I took over, I'll just give you an explanation on how it went from, and you can take a look at the, uh, year progression there. In 2018, commissary swept about $82,000. That was for the entire year. Um, in 2019, um, $87,000, I was just a new sheriff. Um, and then, uh, when Commander Parker came on board, um, I actually, uh, this wasn't, and this wasn't really an idea that I actually came up with. This was actually Sheriff Cumberworth from Ripley County on how they did their commissary. Um, and so he asked us to come down and look at the commissary, so we did. And then we actually modeled our commissary after their commissary. Uh, basically, we created a business model. Commissary for anyone who doesn't know what that is, basically, it's kind of like a bookstore for those of my age or, or around that age would understand the old bookstore in the school. You could go and get additional things, um, for, while you're at the school, it's for the inmates. So we have a state mandated inmate or a state mandated commissary that all the inmates, if they're indigent or if they're not indigent, they are entitled to. This kind of gives us an opportunity, and this is a fund that is not, um, it is absolutely separate from the general fund and also the money, uh, fund is not pervert over to the general fund, and that's by statute. Um, and we can use that money for a myriad of things. I could go down the list, but, um, it can be, uh, everything that we basically purchased. And we make lots of purchases, uh, out of the commissary, which is, which is an offset to, um, offset to the county as far as tax dollars. Because if not, honestly, I would have to put it in my budget and try to fight for that budget time. And everybody knows how tight that is, and, you know, we're back at budget time again. Uh, just to give you an idea, I think I provided, or actually provided a, um, list in 2021, we purchased, we spent about $209,000-ish. Those are large, these are basically, uh, these are a summation, this isn't everything. These are just a summation of the large purchases that we did use to offset county tax dollars. In other words, even, even in the commissioner's budget. Um, in that, in that year, we, uh, we had two vehicles, that's just in 2021. Um, we actually paid for the maintenance supervisor's salary out of that, which, uh, which actually, you know, it doesn't matter where it comes out of. It's got to come out of somewhere. So we took care of that. That actually was an offset for 50, almost $50,000. It was out of tax burden for the county. Um, we actually purchased ammunition. Uh, we used to mow the grass and, or used to have the grass mower, that was $10,000 a year. That's what we paid, um, a service, they did a great job. It was $10,000 a year. Once we put a maintenance person on board, we actually bought a zero-turn mower out of commissary. So essentially the inmates, the inmates' families, um, paid for that lawnmower, which then again saved us $10,000 a year, um, as far as tax dollars. So we, we did that. Um, there are all kinds of things, bulletproof vests, um, RFID, which is our scanning. If you're from the hospital, if folks are from the hospital, understand that scanning device. So every one of our inmates wears a, wears a wrist tag, uh, with a, with a picture on it and a barcode. And all our deputies, all our detention deputies go in and scan, so we don't give you the wrong medicine, the wrong food, all of that stuff. And that is actually saving, that's about $15,000 a year. And I think originally we paid $25,000.
32.
32,000, uh, we paid for that, um, originally. And that has actually helped a lot with liability, because that's basically just the liability. We got a cash counter, we take so much cash, we got a cash counter, and that's also because oftentimes we get counterfeit bills. Um, so we spend a lot of money on a cash counter, um, that actually would, uh, would detect those things. Uh, we pay for, uh, traffic cameras every year out of commissary. Those traffic cameras assist us in anybody coming through our county, um, that may be wanted on a warrant nationally. And, uh, that has actually netted quite a few arrests. Um, and those are throughout the county, we pay for those. It was a hydraulic lift we paid for in 2021. You go to 2022 right now, um, you can look at, we've purchased, uh, a portion of a 2021 Dodge Ram truck, vehicle marking, COVID stipend, the entire COVID stipend, um, on both, well, we did, I think, uh, one year and then we finished up with the other. It's all paid for out of commissary, that was not tax dollars. We paid for that out of commissary. Um, so radios, detention center, and, uh, of course, our programs director, and that's exactly, if you look at the statutes, that's one thing that you put in there is your substance abuse and/or your programs director. That comes directly out of there. So that is, in, in my opinion, probably one of, one of the most important aspects we have of our detention center, uh, is that it, are the programs that we have to try to reduce recidivism in the county, um, and that comes out of there. The one question that I probably get from citizens the most are, what are you doing for my loved ones while they're in here? Um, I think we even had a deal, it might have been before Commissioner Ms. Weller was here, where someone came in before we turned the TVs on. We hadn't quite have everything, we didn't quite have anything up, up and running yet. Um, and they were complaining that, uh, they didn't have a new deck of cards in there. Well, we're not going to just let inmates sit in there and play cards and do nothing. Everything we do inside that facility is actually to help to move them to a better place, hopefully so that they can be offended. And that's from the, from the second they come in that facility. So the program director and all these expenses with that, again, inmates, the inmates' families that put that much on those books on that commissary, that helps pay for that, and we're actually doing something and investing back in those people so that hopefully they become, again, taxpayers and not tax drinkers. So this year we've spent, we've spent $120,000 already. Um, the other items that have not been spent just yet, but, uh, inmates, we, uh, just our janitorial services are $13,000 a year. We paid for that out of commissary. Um, gloves, we spent $1,500 a month on gloves, you can imagine, because every time you put your hands on an inmate, you got to have a pair of gloves on and then you have to discard it. So that's, you know, that's almost $18,000 a year we paid just in rubber gloves. Um, that's paid for out of commissary. Uh, new patrol vehicle, and then, of course, our MiFi, which our deputies have, uh, in our cars. Um, when they arrest prisoners, they have to have that MiFi in order to work on the CAT system. That's about $12,000 a year as well. So those are some extra expenses on the outside that we pay for. If you look at our commissary, um, and what we've swept, and I'm going to let Dana Parker, Commander Parker, he's probably going to answer your questions better than I can, because how it actually works is, uh, Commander Parker actually does the physical portion of the commissary and whatnot, and the, and the, uh, kind of boots on the ground. And then Supervisor Ashley Wilson does, does the, uh, setting up of the state board of council. I'll let her explain how that occurred. Um, so we went from 2019, and then you can see to 2020, our jump went from $87,000, um, was the most that we swept. And that was, then you go back 82, and then you go back 2017, and it's about the same, around $79,000 there. Um, then you go to 2020, we swept $296,000, so almost $300,000. We went up because we changed the commissary into a business model. Um, and we, and we went off of basically what the Ripley County model was, um, which is pretty favorable down there for, for his constituents as well. Uh, 2021, uh, we swept $533,000, so half a million dollars we went, went and, uh, to offset that. So, um, and then this year so far, just 2022, I just added that, Commander Parker gave that this morning. To date this year, we swept $200,000, and we're actually a little slow right now because we're downing inmates inside the commissary. So, um, I'm going to, any questions you have that you prepared, and I'm going to probably let Dana or Ashley answer those questions.
So you've been very transparent on what you swept on you.
Yes, sir.
That's commendable. What I'm trying to get to the bottom of is how did you get from the $87,000 to the $296? So the supplies that you purchased and are sold to the inmates, are that, those supplies funded out of the commissary fund?
Totally, so I will let, I will let Dana, all that Commander Parker's, he'll be able to, better.
Basically, if you understand the entire commissary system, we, we, we pulled money from multiple locations. One is phone use, one is video visits, one is what we call training, which is texting and then.
Right.
Yeah, so sales of product, which is the biggest number.
Yes.
Well, what I did when I, when I took over is I looked at the way we were doing it. Everything was being bought from a company called CPC. They were supplying all of this stuff. We were on a fixed margin, they controlled all the pricing, all the availability, that type of thing. I went over the entire list, picked out the items that were, if you will, used the most, repriced a lot of them on functional pricing. You know, your, your standard model of supply and demand. We took a look at that and I shopped around where I could purchase the product at the best price. And that's exactly how we handled it. So we brought the largest portion of our sales in-house, where we do all the inventory. We purchase it bulk. Ramen noodles is our number one seller, that comes in by the skid boat. We buy over 1,000 a week of the ramen noodles, just because it's a favorite of everybody's. And that's, that's how we did it, is we controlled what we purchased, where we purchased it from, and what we were selling to the inmates.
So the question is, what fund are those supplies purchased from?
All of that is purchased out of the commissary fund.
It wasn't very obvious, as I went through the last six months where those purchases were made, that's where the question came from.
You'll see the, uh, Custom Technologies, Keith and CPC are the biggest three invoices you will see in there. And that is the commissary material. That is the stuff we sell.
Okay.
Keith is where I buy all of my potato chips, ramen noodles, that kind of stuff, which is from Keith. The e-cigarettes, the nicotine pouches and stuff are bought from Custom Technologies. And that's, those are some of our biggest sellers right there. And then CPC is where we do our, the phone, the other commissary that, there, there's a lot of weird stuff. The, the commissary list is about 700, maybe roughly, items long that they can purchase from. We only got the top, uh, I think we have about 25 that we sell out of inside. But every bit of it is purchased with commissary money. And then you'll see that in the receipts, you'll see those names. Those are the biggest names right there.
So your monthly profit sweep, we runs between $30,000 and $40,000?
Yes.
The last six months.
And about $8,000 of that, $5,000 to $8,000 of that is the phone and the chirping devices and the.
That's included in that?
Yes, that sweep is all of that.
Because they're listed separately?
Well, they're listed separately on the spreadsheet which supplied you, but I consider that in the totals because that is the income.
But the total, so the profit sweep is the total including those, even though they're listed separately and documented separately?
Yeah, the totals include that, but it is documented. Now, keep in mind, when we talk about profit sweep, that is not, those are dollar sweeps. We take that money and then we have to pay the invoices.
I understand, but that should be reflected in the report as well. So they should be counterbalanced.
Well, it is reflected in there. It is on their spreadsheet as a separate line item. I just, when I did the totals that I gave to Sheriff, I totaled them together. But it is on the spreadsheet, every single month, it is listed individually as the individual item of where it was swept from. Yes, it is all.
So as we look at, as we look at those sweeps, you're saying that the chirping, the phone video is part of that? Imma grant, the one month you received $4,000 grant, was that included as part of that same total?
It is included in there.
So you're double reporting your inputs?
No, I don't follow what you're saying. It, okay, the numbers come off the spreadsheet.
Yes.
They're detailed on the spreadsheet. When I gave the sheriff numbers, I just added all those together because.
That's the total.
What the sweep was.
That's the total of everything.
But we're not double reporting anything. The spreadsheet is the law. It, it is what is fact. Any numbers we give you is taken from that spreadsheet.
Right.
And if you'll total up all those numbers, the sweeps for the, chirping for the phones and the commissary, you'll find that totals to the numbers that we just gave you. But it is reported separately on the spreadsheet, yes.
So on average then, that says that there's $30,000 to $45,000, um, the chirping and video runs approximately $5,000 of that. So that takes it down to $25,000 to, let's say, $40,000. But I figured, without understanding that that was a roll-up, because it looked like it was individually reported, if you had 30 inmates, which would be a full jail, and we know you don't have that many, 30 days a month, and the month that you accumulated $45,000 in the sweep, that each inmate would be spending an average of $6.51 per day, every inmate, to reach that amount of money. So take $5,000 off, you're going to be down to probably about, eh, $575, I guess. That seems a little bit exorbitant, but based on what I see in, is expense even looking at what you're saying, you know, the ramen noodles, this kind of stuff is out of there, what kind of markup are, are you charging on that? the ramen noodles, this kind of stuff is out of there, what kind of markups are you charging on that?
We took mark, okay, under the old system, basically, we're working on a fixed thirty-five percent margin that CPC determined, and they determine the pricing. Under the new model, we're roughly sixty percent margin right now on in-house. We still have thirty-five percent on the stuff that we get from CPC.
I'd like to look at the detail of the expenses for supplies. Let's see if that calculates out, because it seems a little bit exorbitant to me.
What's exorbitant? Sixty percent or the number?
The number. I was at sixty percent spot. I just don't see that that's gonna add up to the twenty-five to forty thousand dollars a month you sweep in profit.
Well, you know, that's the information that, like, when we invited you over, it's hard to show you on, but we have all that information. It's on Lockdown, which is the trust fund that we use. You know, the money comes in. We don't actually handle the money ourselves. It's not put in our bank account. There's a thing called the inmate trust fund.
Mm-hmm.
We use a software called Lockdown. The money is deposited direct into Lockdown either when they come in, if they have money on them, that is put into their trust account, or their families put money on the outside into their trust account, either via the kiosk we have in the lobby, vest wheel, and/or through the software on the internet. Once that money is in the trust fund, then they can use that money from there as they want to, as long as they have it, and they place the orders, or they use the phone, that type of thing. All that is in Lockdown, and can be shown. But we don't ever actually handle that money per se as cash in our hands. It's locked into that account. We don't have access to that per se.
So the video side of it, as times are moving forward, there's more and more video for court appearances?
Those are no charges. There's nothing involved in charge.
Very good, very good.
That's paid for by the courts as far as they have the account.
In the past, in these meetings, the sheriff has made comment that an inmate would happen to clog a toilet, break a toilet, break a sink, that their personal commissary account is charged for that. Is that still true?
Not for breaking or if, if normal use of stuff, like the buttons on the toilets.
If they destroy it?
I mean, we don't have any problems with anybody because they're very well-built. They will wear out. We pay for those not out of commissary. That comes out of the general budget. We don't collect for it. We do not charge an inmate for standard wear and tear of stuff. The clogging of the drains or the toilets, we do because our maintenance gentleman has to go in and clean. There's no real cost to it other than the labor cost of, it's really hardly any cost to it because he's there anyway. It's a deterrent. When we first started having this problem, when I started charging for that, guess what? We don't have a problem with anymore. I probably don't charge it lucky once a month now fifty dollars to clean the toilet out because, so it was more a deterrent to protect our new facility.
And that was just for clogged drains?
Yes.
That was my misunderstanding, so.
Interesting that we charge the inmates, doesn't mean we get paid back. Most of our inmates are indigent, so after they're out of our facility, if sixty days go by and they don't do any of the crimes, don't get put back to the facility, that's money that we, it all just wipes off.
Well, my concern there was, my interpretation was, if they broke the toilet or a sink, that we paid for it out of general funds, because I approve those. And then if you were collecting, it's like, I don't see anything coming back.
And that would be valid. One of the things that I did charge for that was a break, we had two windows broken, shutting those theoretically are non-breakable windows. Nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars to have poly jail replace them. Maintenance gentleman and myself, Greg and myself, looked into that. We were able to buy plexiglass window that's even stronger and better for fifty-three dollars locally. We bought that out of commissary. Greg installed them. So we spent, the inmate essentially is, we're paying for that repair rather than us having to come to you for a thousand dollars repair. So there have been a few little things like that, but it's easier for us to cut, rather than charge you for something that I run out and buy quickly from whoever, it's easier to do it out of commissary sometimes.
And when you see property damage, I know it's easy to think automatically buildings and structures, but property or inmates includes blankets, mats, pillows, uniforms, they'll write on their shoes, things like that, and that's all stuff that we pay for out of commissary. So when we charge them and we get reimbursed for that, it goes.
Yeah. Property damage is a generic term we use in there, but, you know, popular for them to try to cut their blankets in half. When we do laundry change, they'll turn it in half, get a blanket. The next time, they'll turn the other half, get a second blanket, I'd say. So we find that when we discover them, hand us a half a blanket, guess what happens? They get charged. We have fixed prices. In the case of that kind of stuff, we have very, very minimal markup, just to cover freight and handling. We don't charge the sixty percent margin. You know, so those are just really replacements. We charge a replacement cost on items like uniforms, if they tear the uniform, or, we've had enough of them tear up their mattresses thinking that was a cool thing to do. Now, it's cool, I'll tell you, for eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars that we buy all of our mattresses out of commissary.
So I'm thinking, if you could give me one month, pick one, and highlight the expenses that were your bulk purchases for the commissary supplies that you'd sell, and your number of inmates, that I could calculate, balance that out? I'd be happy to.
The print is implied, so it's probably June's report.
Okay.
I didn't, this is a typical list of the commissary that comes in from CPC. You can see how long it is. And at that particular month, commission sales from CPC was twelve-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. We get thirty-five percent commission of four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, roughly, or forty-five point six five. At the same time, we in-house sales were thirty-five-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. Cost, I went back on this particular one, and I looked up every order, pulled what we sold and what the cost, our cost was on those. We cost thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and we ended up with a twenty-one-hundred-and-forty-one-dollar profit that particular, and I said month, this was a week. I'm sorry, this was one week sales, not a month. This was one week. So that was exactly how I looked at it, and that turns out to be a sixty percent gross margin, which is what I set up the pricing, so my model worked. It turned out that way. So that's exactly a typical month.
So one week?
Sorry, one week. This is a typical week.
And your sales were thirty-five ninety?
I didn't make a copy of this, but, and they're handwritten, and I'm here. This is the sales, these are all the sales to CPC, and I'm thirty-five percent. This was what our total sweep was of that. This is, you can make it, you can kick this out. This was internal sales in-house. That was our cost. And I went back and looked up every single item that we sold. And this is what our net profit was on that one week. Now, this does not include, this number does not include the chirping
Right, right.
or video. This is strictly the commissary items.
Right, so as I've looked at June, your spreadsheet, chirping was twenty-six seventy-two ninety-two. Phone was forty-one fifty-five thirty-five. So six thousand eight-hundred-and, let's say, forty-five dollars. Your profit sweep was thirty thousand one-hundred-and-thirty, so let's round that up. Twenty-three thousand is what you made in commissary sales. So you're telling me this week was?
That was a fairly low week, but it was, it was just one on crack. They vastly very heavily on what they are.
They're not consistent.
They're not consistent.
Because our inmate population goes up and it goes down, and ISO goes up on what they buy one week and what they don't purchase the next week.
When we get our commission statements from CPC, they hold true. Basically, it breaks down. Everything they charge, what our commission is and what our.
Right, I've got no question with chirping.
On the back of the actually, there is a report I need to show you. While we actually sweep, while we actually sweep every month, this is everything that's involved in the sweep. So commissary, the indigent fund, so indigent kids, we come in. And we charge thirty dollars for, obviously, the, sometimes initial intake kits. They're inmate property, so if we have to store property for them, there's a lot of inmates. We have one who has, I think he has over a hundred of them right now. We can allow them to keep that in a locker. We charge them for that storage. And also, they pay to commissary, but then commissary is what pays for, you know, the materials to store it and all of that. And onsite sales, as Dana was discussing, with actual, like, kitchen booths, coffee, paper, cakes like that. Other properties, we actually purchase several cases of paper out of the commissary fund every year, as well as part of our two-state contract is paid out of the commissary fund. So that we're not paying for pre-purchasing supplies, anything like that. But we're using for inmates, we're not paying for that out of general, it's in the commissary. And property, which we discussed, was masks, you know, uniforms, things like that. So that's what comes out every month of our sweep. And that is a report generated by Lockdown according to what is bought, what is charged. And then we have a separate sweep called the medical sweep. It does go into the inmate medical fund in the general account. And that is what the co-pays and the inmates are charged for.
That's separate to the commissary.
Also, to note that the original fund was set up by the State Board of Accounts. So basically, we went exactly on what the recommendations of the State Board of Accounts were.
We do upload our monthly engagements also. Everything that's in the binder, we upload to Gateway every year, and then at the end of the year, we upload a money's dispersed, money's, you know, took in. We upload that to Gateway, and State Board of Accounts does audit our funds every year.
Indicator of them auditing us and how forced it is to look at it. They question, they sent an email asking questioning why the trust fund only, in twenty-twenty, I think it was, trust fund only went up twenty-eight percent, but commissary receipts went up ninety-one percent.
So.
And that's because of the way we are modeling this for sales now.
So you went, this new business model, what year again? Twenty?
Basically, I started looking at twenty nineteen when I first joined.
Right.
And then twenty twenty.
And then twenty twenty.
Now, when we moved into.
We were moving into new jails, so it's all implementation and.
The old facility didn't allow us to store anything that we needed.
So logic would signify that we went from a thirty-five to a sixty percent profit margin at that point in time, or over a period of time. So if I looked at twenty nineteen, and yes, I understand the inmate population goes up and down, but averages probably is going to be fairly close between nineteen and twenty?
Actually, no. We moved over close to a hundred and seventy prisoners. When COVID hit, we dropped down to around eighty-some. So then, for a period of time, there were, yes.
But where I was headed with that, if I took your twenty nineteen figure of eighty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-five, and I assume that you increased your profit margin from thirty-five to sixty-five percent, right?
Not in twenty nineteen.
In twenty twenty?
Yes.
That would indicate that you're going to increase by about thirty percent what your take would be if averages were the same. You're telling me now that it was less? Well, if I added thirty percent to the eighty-seven thousand, I don't come up to two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. You know, that's over a hundred percent increase.
Well, keep in mind, a different facility. The old facility, the people didn't have, the inmates didn't have a facility to be able to purchase stuff. It wasn't available because we didn't have in-house stock. There also, the whole facility, it wasn't conducive to them buying a lot of the stuff they wanted. We increased the offering. There was a whole bunch of steps involved in increasing that. It wasn't just bumping the price up. That was only one diner part. Making it available to them, delivering it on a consistent basis. We, they do hygiene. We do that every single day. So they go order what they need. They need a bar of soap, that's every day. We do the food commissary once a week, you know, so. And then we do the e-cigs every day. We do the nicotine pumps every day. Those things are all handled, I won't say differently than they were, but more efficiently than they were.
Because they weren't even allowed some of those items.
Yeah, it all goes back to taking a look at what they needed, what was acceptable, what was a good, good plan on our part. We've changed the e-cigs. We've always sold e-cigs, but there were problems with it. So, well, we did sell for a while because those problems were them taking apart and using the batteries and stuff. I instituted a system where they're all barcoded. We have a laptop computer and barcode reader. Every single one, and it's tied directly to our fulfillment account, that it knows who our inmates are. Everything is barcoded to them and barcoded back, so there's no more of losing those kind of things. Now, we've got that organized. We're able to supply them. We sell two to three hundred dollars a day worth of those to them.
So they can't smoke at jail?
Well, in, in the current, it's always a thing. No matches or anything like that.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's another tool that we have for disciplinary, if we need to discipline them. That's, you know, something that we can take away.
That's where a lot of the flux is in this, is we do, if somebody does damage, does something wrong, we can sanction them and take away some stuff from them. And that we use it. Almost the reason I picked chirping to go to that last year was because, first of all, gave them something to do while they were in there, so they could communicate with their families. But unfortunately, the other part of it is it can be used as a tool which you can take away if they're negative behavior. So we do things to help them. We try to be good to them. We try to make them better. But if they choose not to be, I have the option to take stuff away from them.
It's also investigative tool, that all chirping, every chirp that comes in and out of there, every phone call, we have access to from an investigative standpoint.
And that's been very useful on a few occasions.
And they're aware of that.
On a regular basis?
Yes.
Yes.
I require my deputies to review the video. We have pretty strict rules about nudity and stuff like that on the videos. So my deputies, when they have time or control, they can have the videos, be watching the visits, and then we look for problems with them. So we stay on top of that. We're required to do that.
Our site also does that with the incoming mail. We read all of the inmates' mail. We actually don't physically let them have the mail. We scan it to a kiosk. They can read on the kiosk that has greatly taken down the amount of tracking of drugs that we had in our facility.
Legal mail, we have to look at it. That's different.
Right. Any other questions?
Any questions?
I appreciate Chuck looking into this question that comes up.
We get, we get hit with it quite often. How did it go?
Sure.
From eighty-seven thousand to half a million dollars?
It is tough. Yeah, I understand that, and we're more than happy to answer your question any time. We're a hundred percent upfront on all of this stuff. I say go to the board of accounts, State Board of Accounts. Welcome to show anybody on the board that wants to come over. We can actually walk you through Lockdown and that kind of stuff. We cannot show that kind of thing, and obviously, it's a little corn, but, yeah.
And you would be shocked what it might have done to our commissary. We have a couple that spend two or three hundred dollars a week.
Are we?
I thought there was a limit. Didn't I read somewhere that remember this?
Certain items.
Okay.
We do limit certain items, but no, as far as the.
I thought there was a statute of seventy-five dollars a month or something that I seen.
I know, no statute. We commissary, I've read the whole statute. I never saw them in.
It wasn't in that. It was somewhere else in the state, in the state.
You find that. I'd be more than happy to look at it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Hales, Sean.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of group of things. I wanted to introduce our intern for the semester. This is Darian Craft. And Darian's been with us since May. She's, if anybody's had a chance to look at our web page, it's completely redesigned. She did a lot of that, and she continues to do a lot of tech stuff for us, as well as learn everything. She wanted to come to the meeting, see how this part works. She's just learning a little bit about public health. And also, while I'm here, I want to thank you for the remodeling permissions that we got in place. It's looking great. We're real proud of where we are. Invite you to kind of take a look at this. Thank you.
Looks good over there. I've been over a couple of times, and done a great job. So how long are you here, Darian?
I'm going to continue in the fall as well.
Okay.
Just gonna stick with us through the semester on a part-time basis.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment too. I really appreciate the money spent. It's starting to look like a professional office down there.
It does. I commented the other day, they have places so that everybody's not into everybody's business. I mean, they have rooms they can go to now.
I mean, they have rooms they can go to now, be segregated, tall. People that are getting vaccines are not with people for other reasons. It's worked out well, I think. A request for use facilities, I don't see that here.
That was just the update, um, links wanted to use the parking lot. We have not heard back from them, but, um, I don't know what the exact date or thing was, but they didn't have the proper insurance.
Right.
Didn't know if you wanted to approve a contingent on proper insurance paperwork. How you like, we just left it on there from the kiosk, so they had been contacting me, so they would get it.
That was, uh.
You're in Chief Riley. It's almost 27.
As I say, yeah.
Last week.
Yeah, there's not another meeting before.
We want to approve that contingent on insurance. Think it's a bad precedent. They've never recorded. Anything else? Anyone else? Doug?
All right, uh, I'll offer a quick thank you to the IT department on that floor office. Uh, generally, they've been super easy for our requests. And specifically, Shelley came down from the child support office and said, they did it, they did it. And I was like, well, they, they, they what? So, um, over 30 years or 40 years of ISATs in the child support collection, we're moving to INVEST. So we have to make the documents from ISATs, talk to the documents in INVEST. And our preferred, preferred provider gave us a $62,000 quote to do that for us. And there were other quotes, uh, but IT figured it out. And they did. So just amazing work and easygoing and calm and, uh, it's an ongoing project, but, uh, we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. You can look back to the spread, Doug, thanking.
Thank you for watching. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Always good to get those comments. Anyone else? Dylan? Ron?
Um, just, uh, the very start of the project, we've been, um, about, I would say, probably six projects. Uh, funding, see? All right, so we're ready to move forward to the K. County, our pirate park, Indian Park, uh, site. We've just been, um, continuing to meet on some of the other projects. As far as, uh, business expansion, improvement, uh, site visit on Thursday. And we have, I've been contacting last week, planning, uh, business looking to K. County, so.
Tell them also, Ron, about our, make my, make our move.
Make my moves? Yes, we actually, uh, because of the success of the first round, uh, last year, make my move again. It's a, it's a ability to kind of draw, you know, improve, uh, remote workers who live in K. County. Uh, that could be a success from last year. Because it was a success, uh, the state actually took notice of it and allotted funds to, uh, allow other communities to do the same, including our community, which we were able to, uh, use the funds that we had already invested last year to use as match for funding for an extra round. So, uh, we'll be actually building the money that we invested. So it's an application, it's a grand process, so we're going forward.
Thanks. Anyone else have anything? Return. I'll second. We are reset, thanks.
Thanks.